Good evening, everybody. It is 6 o'clock. I call this meeting on the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen to order. If you'll all join me in salute and flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And now I will entertain a motion to recess for the special town meeting that we're having tonight, and it has one article on it. So is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tara, meeting is yours.
Thank you. We do have a quorum for our special town meeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Deschutes, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the said town to qualify to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the North Brookfield Police Department in said North Brookfield on Tuesday, the 26th day of August, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to act on the following articles. Due to the lack of the elected moderator here tonight, town meeting must nominate and elect an individual from the floor by about... This individual will serve as moderator until the special town meeting dissolves. Are there any nominations from the floor?
Nominate her.
Oh, that's very nice.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Hearing no nominations besides me, I will remain as moderator for this meeting.
We have to vote. We have to vote, no?
Oh. Okay. All in favor of me being the moderator for this meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed?
Opposed? I don't love meetings.
Well, if, you know, if more people vote against it.
Hearing no nominations, I will serve as moderator for this meeting, and Mary Beth will serve as town clerk for the meeting. She won't do anything special. Okay. Article 1, see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds to prior year bills to pay prior year electricity bills or take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $846.37 from Highway prior year 2025 to Highway prior year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No questions? Okay. This article being for a prior year bill requires 9/10 approval. We will vote the article backwards. All opposed to this article, please raise your hands. All in favor of this article, please raise your hands. It's unanimous. Does anyone have any further... Anything further for this meeting? There being no more business of this meeting, I will entertain a motion to dissolve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned.
All in favor?
All in favor. Sorry. I'm not good at this.
Thank you, Tara.
I'm just helping, Tara. Thank you. All right. So now we will go back into our regularly scheduled programming.
Thanks, crowd.
Goodbye. There goes our fan club. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve with minutes of August 19th, 2025. All in favor? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 4 for $267,000... School warrant number 1013 for $97,480.43. General warrant number 1015 for $95,757.61. Fire highway warrant 1016 for $177,457.88. Recapture warrant 1017 for $142.8. And the debt warrant 1018 for $41,609.22.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. We have a spending request for $1,200 to Rusty's Tree Service for tree removal to cut and remove one compromised tree with several dead limbs in the Maple Street Cemetery. Tree is located on southeast corner of cemetery across from Jim's Pizza and overhangs North Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve that, $1,200.
So moved.
Discussion? Okay. So just so everybody knows, that's a tree that the Cemetery Commission's been looking at for a while. It's been gradually getting worse over the years, and we had some taken down, oh, quite a few years ago.
Probably about five years ago.
Yeah. On Maple Street and prior to that as well. They just, you know, keep dying. So before it becomes a hazard, they want to take it down. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. All right. No old business. National Grid. All right.
You want us to come up there or just stay here?
I think they can... They can hear her, right? Over there?
I think they'll be able to... Okay.
Yep.
There you are. Well, my name's Riley Murray. I'm here with National Grid. I have Louis Fong, Joanne DeRose, and Aubrey O'Keefe with me as well. Today, we are going to talk about the releasement of a sewer easement at the Lashway substation. In front of you, you will have the PowerPoint presentation I will be presenting today. Now you can follow along through that. So National Grid is proposing to expand and upgrade the Lashway substation, which is located at 39 East Brookfield Road in North Brookfield. The town of North Brookfield has a sewer easement that bifurcates the substation parcel, and National Grid is requesting the releasement of the easement to allow for the construction of the expanded substation. Moving to the next slide. So the existing Lashway substation was constructed in the 1960s. It was designed to support a load capacity of 21 MVA via three feeders. The proposed project is looking to increase the substation capacity to 110 MVA with five feeders installed and also with the provision of three additional feeders to support future growth, system reliability, and redundancy. The equipment... The upgraded substation will be constructed using state-of-the-art equipment and will be in full compliance with National Grid standards. And then on the next slide. So there is a 16 and 1/2-foot wide sewer easement dated back to 1894 that bifurcates the Lashway substation. Per the Sewer Department, the 12-foot clay sewer pipe within the sewer easement was cut and was abandoned about 30 years ago, and there is currently no plan to install a sewer pipe within the easement. So National Grid is requesting the release of the sewer easement to allow for the expansion of the Lashway substation. And the images that you see before you in the red, that is the... That is the substation expansion that we are looking to do. And then below it, the yellow is the sewer easement that currently lies on the property. So what are the project opportunities of this? So this project will support growth. It's going to expand capacity for residential, commercial, and industrial energy as well as renewable energy. It's going to improve reliability. The new equipment will increase reliability, resilience, and will offer more consistent power. And it's also going to provide enhanced worker safety and faster outreach response. And so here is the proposed schedule of the project. So we have the releasement of the sewer easement in fall of 2025. We have the substation design completion in the summer of 2026. We have local level permits and approval in July or August of 2026. Substation construction commencement, assuming we have all permits in hand, will be late 2026. And then substation construction completion in October of 2028. And then for any questions regarding this, I have my contact information, Riley Murray, as well as Aubrey O'Keefe's contact information. So feel free to reach out with any questions.
Did you have any more to add to that, or...
No, that's all.
All right. So we can ask questions now?
Yep.
All right. So I have a few questions. I'm looking at the red expansion. How close to the road does that get? So it is... May I? Yeah, absolutely. My name is Delhi Hua. I'm the project engineer for National Grid. So it's still in concept design right now, but you can see Donovan Road. Yep. And we're still looking at some wetland in the area, so we're trying to make sure that we stay out of the wetland. Yep. Have the substation equipment laid out appropriately from a safety point of view. So I don't have the exact dimension right now yet, but I can get that information to you. I would say at least 30 feet. All right. Because it does... Is National Grid required to follow, like, our zoning setbacks? So we... For all this, the zoning setback, my understanding, it has to do with the fence, which is taller than six feet, considered a structure, equipment within the sub... So there will be a fence outside of the substations, and we will be looking at that. If we cannot meet the setback requirement, we will go back to the board, the planning board, for all the areas. Okay. Now, you're looking for us to just release? Yes. Are you gonna have to... Are you running a new water and sewer line to any of the project? Yeah. So we do, as required by the State planning board, we do... We are required to provide a bathroom. So right now, we're still trying to lay out where that bathroom is within the site. We have some conversations with the Sewer Department. I know there's a manhole across the street from us. I know there's a main and... Our freshly paved street. Exactly. So we're looking at right now, the problem is the distance between where we think we ... My bathroom is and the manhole side, probably more than 300 feet. So we're gonna have to pump it. And the use of the... It's a main substation. Right. Really used bathroom. So the flow gonna be very, very limited. Right. Yeah. I'm not really concerned about that so much as cutting across the brand-new pavement. Yeah. So there's a number of issues there. Because we, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm just concerned because, no offense to the four of you, but we've had National Grid do cutting before, and they haven't always done the best job closing up the roads afterwards, and that was brand-new. So I promise you that if we do have to get through, cut the street, we will saw cut the pavement. We will pave, repave, coat to coat. But in the areas that we cut through, we will saw cut. You know, the last thing you want to do is just, you know, kind of dig it, and then you have to jack up edge, and then that's where you have a problem. We'll saw cut, we will mill, and then we'll have, you know, proper installations with the base and the top. Okay. So I guess the only other thing on that is usually when you do something like that, after it sits for about a year, you have to redo it because it settles. Would you be able to come back and smooth it out? So I think there's a couple things we can do. We can put in the temp pavement, and then, just like you say, we'll allow it to settle, and then we'll come back and mill two and a half top, and then repave the two and a half top. Okay. Well, that's all I got at the moment. So Jamie, Ralph?
I don't really have anything. I think it's good to expand. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, they're expanding their business.
Yeah.
And we're paying for the service. It sounds like a good...
Do we have a problem now? Do we have a problem with service now? The level of servicing that we're getting out of the service?
I'm not so sure this is about us.
What?
Not so sure this is about us.
No, I get what you're saying, but...
I'm thinking that 110 megavolt amps? Is that what that is?
Yeah, it's megavolt. Okay. So this project is part of the TPU 2075. So November of last year, we were ordered by TPU to proceed with this project. And this project encambers nine substations between Wusso and Amos. It's designed to increase capacity, not only for the town but also the renewable energy. So the cost of this project will be borne by the solar farm, the Digi customers. So for them to... Like the solar farm, for them to connect to the grid, they have to pay a tariff, a fee, a zip fee to connect, and that zip fee will be used to pay for the cost of all the infrastructure upgrade. The town benefit from it because we're gonna, you know, all the town gonna get brand-new infrastructure that have not been replaced for 30, 40, sometimes 50 years. You've got the redundancy, you've got the reliability, and the cost of it is not yet borne by the grid payers. So through National Grid, you get your utility bill. The cost of it is not going to your utility bill. Okay. So that being... That being said, we've had other... I don't necessarily think there are precedent setting, but we did have a... We did have a cell tower where they came over a few feet onto town property, and they did give us a one-time payment to be able to move on to... You know, just basically put footings on the town property to help with their cell tower. And the other issue is we are... We're not using the easement at the moment, but it is a town asset that the taxpayers So I'm not exactly sure what it's worth, but it's still an asset. So maybe we could think about it and come back to the table again, take it under advisement. I would love to have the town consider the upgrade. So this project's gonna be probably in the range of 15, $20 million total ticket cost. Certainly, that will be... That's tremendous benefit to the town from a capacity point of view, reliability point of view. If we don't... If we don't proceed with this project, I think town, from a growth point of view, you know, a couple years from now, we come back. It's gonna take time to get a project like this on the board, designed, and construct. So I just want to make sure that we take that into consideration. In order for us to proceed... So if there's a concern about town asset, I'm hoping we can get the release of sewer easement. But if that's not the case, if the town is concerned about that, you know, is there a way that we can... If we do have a property, there are swat land that closer to the fence, but the equipment are not sitting on top. And if necessary, we can swap the easement. So instead of, you know, 12 and 1/2 feet or 16 and 1/2 in the middle of the substation, we can move the sewer easement. But the question for town would be, do you need that in the future? Because you do have a sewer main in... What's the name of this one?
East Brookfield Road.
East Brookfield Road, that I believe you do need. There's limited flow, and I would hate to see the town, you know, kind of constructing a second sewer east sewer main if you really don't have a capacity issue. And where would that... I'm sorry. Where would that... Where would that swat of land be? We can sit down with you and come up... Again, right now, you have 16 and 1/2 feet. So we can figure out where that need to be.
I mean, this is something that I haven't really discussed with National Grid, but it's something I did discuss with my board. You know, if there's a proposed proposal from National Grid to move the easement, I wonder if we can have a discussion about maybe running sewer pipe, maybe somewhere on Donovan, or maybe adding a manhole somewhere in the driveway next to the highway barn? Because I think there is a possibility... This is kind of going outside of releasing, you know, how the town feels about it, but, you know, the Sewer Department would love to have a new sewer customer. You know, and if we were able to connect them to our system, that's a new customer for us. Kind of gets them away from having to look at the option of a tight tank on that land. So that's just something, again, I haven't really had this discussion with National Grid. We kind of wanted to come here and see what the town stocks were. I met with my board about this. They have certain opinions, and they were pretty... They were willing to consider releasing it. Like I said, they kind of wanted to propose, you know, some... A small addition to the sewer collection system or some sort, but we haven't really had any further discussion on that.
So just so I understand you, the idea of getting an additional customer in the National Grid substation is what you're saying, is that that's what the commission is?
Yeah.
It sounds like we're already there. Sounds like we're already tucking, cutting across the road to get the...
Yeah. I mean, that's... I think that's their hopes. This drawing actually shows a... It's kind of hard to see. It looks like either a leach field or a tight tank to some degree. That's something I have to... I'm assuming we'd have to run through conservation, given the location.
It's close to the waterline now?
Right.
Were the...
Okay, any other...
Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I haven't really had any further discussion with National Grid on this, because we just didn't know where the town stood, but, you know, is it possible that we can, you know, have a discussion and maybe look at a proposed sewer line of some degree? You know, maybe down from the substation down to the line on East Brookfield Road? Or maybe they go right across the street and go into... There's an existing manhole now that the highway's connected to.
That's across the street, right?
Yeah.
We were just talking about that, right?
Yeah.
So that's the manhole. That's probably around 300 feet from where our substation, where we need to connect to.
That sounds right.
Yeah, yeah. And if we have more flow, give us a main substation with more people in it. We rarely have staff in. We only have staff there, doesn't issue. So if you have someone there once every couple weeks, that'll be more, you know, that's... Right. Well, I think, apart from the road being cut and fixed properly, the biggest issue I have with it is, because obviously it'll be a benefit to some degree to the town, but you are gonna be making money on it, right? National Grid will make money on the upgrade, but it's still... Taxpayer owns asset, right? And I think that's gotta be worth something. I don't know what, but I think it's gonna be worth something. You know, like I said, the cell phone tower, they gave us, you know, it wasn't a lot, but they did pay some money, so...
So I just wanted to... My name is Joanne DeRose. I'm also with National Grid. I just wanted to bring to your attention that any equipment that we put in the substation will be subject to property taxes, so the town will definitely see a benefit from the increased size in the equipment. We're generally the biggest taxpayer in any town because you tax every hole, every transformer, every everything that we have. So there will be that added benefit. And then, you know, as Louis mentioned, we're not sure that we need to connect, although if we do need to...
We can work with it. It'll be exact design to see if it's feasible. I think in addition to the tax, obviously, there's constructions. We have to get a building permit from the town. We will connect to the waterline, the town waterline, so there's certainly a connection fee there. So that there, you know, we will work with the town on all those requirements, the permits. There'll be building permit inspections. We do work with the street, there certainly will be this detail, you know, make sure that we have, you know, that covered. And then the only other question I have, because I'm not sure, is whether or not we need to bring it to the town meeting.
I did some quick research on Google. It doesn't give you much, or I can send you down a rabbit hole, but it sounds like...
I won't fit.
It might be what they call a easement vacation, where if the property owner is requesting the release of a not-used or an abandoned piece of utility, that has to be, I believe, if it's owned by the town, it's either like a majority vote or a 2/3 vote.
At a town meeting?
Yeah. It was either that or just the select board has to approve. But obviously, one of the two. I just... I couldn't get a real definitive answer.
Okay.
It's hard to believe National Grid wouldn't know the answer to that.
So I don't know the answer. Our typical person who does that is unfortunately wasn't able to make it today, so I apologize that we don't have that as a key in the room.
Okay. So when do you need it? An answer by? So we have to do eight substations, finish them by November of 2028, and I, you know, a typical project in National Grid for substation upgrade is six to eight years. We're already trying to reduce the schedule to four. So right now, we're proceeding with the design. Obviously, if there's things that have to be changed, we are on the hook for changing it. But we would love to have either a vote or a briefs or whatever legal mechanism is, as far as possible. Okay. So in order to help you move along, we can do some research. If we can do it at a selectmen's meeting, we can do it in two weeks. If we can do it at a... If we have to do it at a town meeting, we can have a special town meeting at a selectmen's meeting, like we did tonight. And we could do that in three or four weeks, because it's gonna be posted for two weeks. Right? Do you guys have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah. I don't want to pay for... I don't want to pay for legal counsel to find out how it's done.
It wouldn't take legal counsel to find out if we need to go to a town meeting. The town clerk should be able to answer. Just call the state and answer.
Fair enough.
I have a question. Earlier, you mentioned something about if that... If we don't release that easement, there's another option, it's 12 feet or something. Whereabouts would that fit on this diagram you gave us?
The existing easement is 16 and 1/2.
Right.
So, but now it's a full substation. If the board and/or the town does not want to release that easement, what we can do is, I'm gonna call it, swap the easement. So instead of that easement, move it over to the side of the substation. So we do have access road on the side of the substation, so vehicle can drive in, so no equipment sits in the area that's access road. So under that can be the sewer easement. And from an easement point of view, we can still drive on top, but as long as we... If you... If there's an easement, if you ever need to install a sewer pipe, you need access to it at all time. So because it's under the access road, you can access it at any time.
So on this... On this diagram you gave us with the yellow highlighter that shows the current easement, would it be to the right of it, to the left of it?
Yeah. So I would say you can see sort of like that access road that's...
Oh, it goes around.
Right. If you look at the bottom one, the black of the new equipment, so the red and the black is up again.
Right.
And then you can see almost like a U shape as the access road around that.
Okay.
The access road tend to be around 20 feet, more or less. So the easement, if needed, can be shifted over to sit underneath the access road.
I see. Okay.
We have not drawn it. If that's a direction that you want us to take a look at, we can, you know, we can draw the sewer line. In earlier conversations that Eric went through there last week, we did some research that sewer easement go throughout property. Now, this go back to 1894. But then the sewer pipe, that is a brewery?
Yep.
Right. Yeah, right next to us. And for some reason, that sewer easement stopped at the brewery. We could not find any record of that sewer easement continued through the brewery. So even if you want to install a pipe in the future, you would then have to somehow get easement through that brewery in order to continue the pipe. Now, this dated back in 1800s, so we have no idea what happened there. Me neither. Me, Brandon, was there.
Was there electricity in 1894?
1913.
Anybody have anything else to add?
I have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
So what is the possibility of putting in your bathroom facility, sanitary facility, directionally drill underneath the road without open cutting the road? Directionally drill over to the manhole that Eric's talking about on the highway side? And you could put in like a low-pressure E1 system type of thing, where you could direct that and then, you know, just maybe...
direct that, and then, you know, just maybe upgrade the sewer line from the highway department down to the sewer plant, that'd be one thing. Um, I don't see any way of, um, open cutting the road to put in the water, because it's tying the water connection, that's a, it is what it is. Um, and, so, you're saying that this is gonna benefit the town. My question is, when we had the power outage in 2008, not all the town-
I think we need to do a-
-was connected to that substation.
They both go across.
I'm connected to the substation. I had power in 2008, the center of town had nothing. So what is the actual distribution system from that substation within the town's more profligate? Because I don't know that it's necessarily-
Good question.
-as big an impact to the town as you might think. It, it runs, as you said, from Worcester to Amherst.
And that's why we invite him to these meetings.
Um, so, um, but those are some of my thoughts, I just, you know-
You gotta keep on adding.
I, I've worked with National Grid a lot over the years, um, and I sympathize with some of the, um, people who are trying to put in solar fields, because there was no capacity in the grid, um, and working on a project related to that exact problem, not here, but somewhere else. And, um, so I, I do think the upgrade is a benefit, but, um, back to the select board's point, you know, there's, there's a point here that maybe the town and, and National Grid can come to an agreement with, um, things that are cost effective for you and beneficial for the town. Those are my thoughts.
So the intent of the substation upgrade is regional, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, we're trying, it's, but it's going to be-
I get it.
Right, it's gonna be, correct, I'm just trying to explain. Um, so it will be located here, but it will absolutely serve the region.
Right.
Um, but it will allow us to, you know, there's no capacity right now, um, there's no availability, so if you wanted something to come into the town, right now, we'd have a hard time serving that. Um, so it would benefit the town if you had a large customer who wanted to come, or even an apartment building, or whatever it may be.
You have to put a solar field in for the meter.
I know. I know. Um, so it will benefit the town that way, but it will also allow, there's some resiliency efforts that will happen as a result. So you are right, the town is not, they're served from different ways, right? We do that, um, you know, in many, many towns, right? They may have a substation, but we can sometimes, because of efficiencies, it's easier to serve a location from another source. Um, so there is, there is that, um, and they don't have the one line, but, um, but we know, you're served from different sources. Um, and so the resiliency that's built into the substation is that we can allow for some looping, what we call looping, and, um, you know, possibly upgrade in the future. There's a lot of technological advances that are current now, that the grid is just not, you know, it's an old system, it's an annual system, it was built a long time ago. Um, there's a lot of new technological improvements that have been made to the system, that having this upgraded substation with upgraded equipment will allow us to help bring everything up to current standards, because it's all new, right?
To the, to that point, is it possible to loop from that substation? So hypothetically, you're in the very, probably bottom fifth of the town, can you loop it back to the center of town so more residents could benefit by the upgrade?
So we're, we actually have a plan in place, show me, talk about my flizer. All right, so we, we actually have a plan in place that we're rolling out, um, in our towns and the company. It's a very long process, and it takes a lot of time and effort.
Sure.
Um, and we've, we've done it already in some towns, and it's working great, and the system is called Flizer. Um, so it's fault location, so you find the fault, you isolate it, and then you have service restoration. So right now, on your, on your poles, you have a fuse, just like your circuit breaker in your home, you have a fuse that when it senses a fault or disruption in, in the current, it will open. If it opens, your line goes dead, it's that simple. You need a lineman to go out and close it back in. It's a manual system right now. Um, these Flizer devices are automatic, so you could actually put them on the line in certain locations, and if the device is looped, so if we can provide that looping system, so if you're fed this way, and we pull a new line, and we come around this way, I know he's going to have a laugh, um, if you come around, if that Flizer in place, um, it will sense that the fault might be on this section of the line, it will automatically go back and turn on everything else using the secondary source. Um, so that's the type of technology that we're looking at now, and that's the type of improvement that the substation can help provide.
And just to add to that, um, you saw the, oh, gorgeous, um, slide, the original substation has three feeders, so other substations have three feeders that go to different parts of town. The new, expanded substation will have five feeders.
Okay.
And then it's designed in the future for eight total feeders.
Right.
We're also upgrading, uh, the substation at Stafford Street in Leistock, so they are connected.
Sure.
That substation is also expanded significantly. We doing work in North Brookfield, Worcester, Westbrookfield, Eastbrookfield, Brookfield, Charlton, I didn't realize it's a main town, Brookfield, but there's a lot of towns that have been done as part of this looping system that you're doing.
Sure. Are you gonna be able to take in existing, North Brookfield has a lot of existing solar fields, are you gonna be able to connect some of those to-
Yes, yes.
-make it more compatible with that substation?
So, so this substation is designed with capacity to allow for, um, solar farms that are in, in the queue, so they're quite a few in the queue right now.
Right.
And we also build in additional capacity in the future, for future solar farms, as well as, uh, with the solar.
Yeah. Okay. I agree.
All right, do you guys got anything else?
I don't think I can expand on what he said.
All right, well, we will do some research, and we will let you know, uh, whether or not we'll do it at the selectman's meeting or at the town meeting.
Okay.
All right, so within, within a month, I guess.
Yeah, so either Tuesday or Friday.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much.
You are.
Roger.
All right, next we have some resignations.
Good morning. Effective immediately, I am tendering my resignation from the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals in North Brookfield. While I have thoroughly enjoyed my time serving with the good people of these boards, I have found myself at a place where I cannot commit to them as fully as I feel they deserve. I regret the suddenness with which this news will likely appear to some. However, I've been considering my participation in these groups, as well as my own personal obligations, for some time, and feel this is the right time to make this choice. Thank you, Michelle Petritas.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept Michelle Petritas's resignations.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you for your efforts, Michelle.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, just so everybody knows, um, with that, we're gonna need, we have openings on those, on the Planning Board and Zoning Board, and the Zoning Board, we will need, uh, at least one more member, at, at least one, because it's, it's a three board, a three-member board, right? So we need at least one.
There's only one on there now.
Right, so a quorum is two. All right, so we need at least one, Brandon, before, uh, October, because there are some appeals hearings that are coming up in the beginning of October, and we need to get that position filled. And there are two vacancies, and I believe there's also an alternate.
Yes.
All right. All right, um, do we have a resignation letter from?
Yes, it's on the, it's on the floor. Can you read it?
All right, Ralph, you want to take that one?
Sure. Dear Kimberly Bent, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as Tax Collector Clerk with Town of North Brookfield, effective September 1st, 2025. I am grateful for the opportunities I've had during my time with the town, I have valued the chance to contribute to the team, and appreciate the support, guidance, and experience I have gained while working here. I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition and will gladly assist in training my replacement or wrapping up outstanding responsibilities before my departure. Thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of the town offices, I wish you and the team continued success in the future. Sincerely, Brianna Walther.
Walther, Wether, Walther. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept Brianna Walters' resignation.
So move.
Second. All right, anything, any discussion?
She was a bit of a loss, she was good.
Yes.
She's only been there for what, six weeks, maybe? Something like that.
Something like that, it's too bad.
She needed more hours.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and that position is being advertised, and I believe there's two, um, applicants already.
No, she couldn't.
So, but feel free to apply for it if you so choose. All right, public comment period. We're gonna give other people a chance first, right? Matt?
Uh, since I'm here, I'll give one, uh, Matt Grant among the two boards, School City and, uh, the North Brookfield Tuition Task Force, so on behalf of both of those committees, I just wanted to say that next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, September 3rd, in the High School Kiva, we're having our next meeting, they're all open to the public. Um, had a little bit of, uh, public attendance, but, uh, we're coming, we're wrapping up probably in the next month or so, so I just wanted to make sure anyone wanted to attend, say anything, talk about anything they could attend. So next Wednesday, September 3rd, 6 p.m., in the High School Kiva.
6 p.m.
Yeah.
Brandon?
Hey, uh, just kind of an announcement, the open hours for the common are dawn to dusk.
Uh-huh.
We had, we have, currently have three signs up there, there was a, another one that was up there that, uh, I guess somebody wasn't satisfied with the hours, so it's gone missing.
You mean it was stolen?
Just to let people know that it's, removing something from the common is, that, uh, had a, the, the common is for everybody to enjoy, all ages, we have our children's play area, we have the basketball courts, we have the soccer fields and baseball fields, and we do have picnic tables placed around the common for the general public to use and enjoy. I've seen a number of people there having lunch and stuff, and that's great, that's what we want to see. But on that note, uh, things that are placed on the common are placed there where the Common Committee wants them. If you would like to see something moved in another, to another position, please talk with the committee, and we will consider your request. Uh, the other week, we had somebody that's having a little, looked like a family gathering or something, which is fine, but they took it upon themselves to remove a picnic table from the child's play area, which was placed there for the parents to sit at, so they can watch their children while they're on the equipment, and they moved it to the far corner of the common and left it there. So that kind of stuff is not looked upon favorably. Uh, if you do want to move something around, we're certainly open to that for a specific purpose, but it needs to be placed back where it was, and all, any trash that was generated during any of these type of events needs to be cleaned up after you're done. So, uh, no problem using the common for, if you want to have a birthday party or a family gathering, that's great, if it's gonna be a large number of people, please check with the committee, and if you want something somewhere else, then check with the committee and, and get our advice on that. Uh, you know, so that's all I have to say on that subject, just a couple announcements. We do have our final Saturday evening concert on the common this Saturday, uh, the Superchargers, Chargers, uh, Supercharged Rock and Roll, don't want to miss that one, it should be a lot of fun.
Why? Why is that one gonna be particularly more fun?
It's gonna be fun and interesting, we, because we have our very own select board member, member Jamie Govan on guitar, and, uh, I've seen some clips of him playing, and he's, uh-
He's gonna get his axe out.
It's gonna be an exciting event, we're done it.
Play loud.
And then, uh, September 6th at 1 p.m., starting at 1 p.m., we have the, what we're calling the Picnic in the Park with, uh, Tequila Mockingbird from 1:00 to 3:00, that should be a fun afternoon. And the following Saturday is the Hartz, uh, Common fundraiser, which they do for us every year, so come out, enjoy all those events, and enjoy your common. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to throw out that the cookout on Saturday, put on by the Senior Center, sponsored by the friends of the Senior Center, was, um, from what I could see, was a success. There were approximately 60 people there, the food was good, entertainment provided by Tabula Blank was good, uh, good music, a lot of prizes, raffle prizes, there was a lot of enthusiasm and fun was had by all. That's all.
Nice. Anybody else?
Be even.
All right, so we have an announcement, and we've got some future agenda items that we want to mention. The announcement is, the town of North Brookfield will be holding an online auction hosted by GovDeals, starting on September 15th, 2025, and ending on September 29th, 2025. Items will be available to bid on, starting at 8 a.m. Live auction will end at 8 p.m., with five-minute staggering end times between auction items. Final bids must be submitted before that deadline. This auction will be hosted online only, potential bidders can access the auction using this link, it's www.govdeals.com backslash North Brookfield. Some of the items available are a 1947 Buffalo fire engine, a 1996 pump truck, two Ford Crown Victorias, a 1995 International with a sander, and 76 lengths of fire hose and more, a few other small odds and ends. The town of North Brookfield follows Mass General Law 30B for disposition of surplus. So if you're interested in those kinds of things, uh, feel, please go to that website and, uh, partake in the auction. Some future agenda items, we have a, um, payroll reporting policy. Uh, in the past, we've talked about, uh, we've, we've actually created policy that has, uh, certain items added and sent to the town treasurer, uh, with the payroll, uh, for like, like vacation time, vacation time used, um, and we're gonna be trying to add several things, uh, such as, uh, comp time, and how it's used, how it's gotten, all that stuff. So we have, so our, our budget team has a, um, a better handle on the potential expenditures by the end of the year. And then we have a, uh, N B P D cruiser policy that we're gonna be looking at as well. Uh, do you guys have anything else you want to add? No?
I think I'm good.
All right. Uh, no executive sanctions, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.